Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Tractor Planning Commission for Wednesday, March ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. If we could have roll call please.
Certainly. Commissioner Whitton.
President.
Commissioner Wadilla.
Here.
Commissioner Leeny.
Here.
Commissioner Prickett.
Here.
Commissioner Wilcox.
Here.
Here.
And Chair Stephenson.
Here, and at this time, I would like to ask everyone to stand for the pledge allegiance and Commissioner Wadilla will be leading at the seat.
And for folks at home, if you can just stand, otherwise there'll be too much of an echo if you recite.
To the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
And first thing I'd like to do is I would like to welcome our newest commissioner, Mr. John Leeny. He is on the speed trap. We had an interview last night and was ratified by the city council after that, and he's here tonight. Not wasting any time. Welcome and look forward to serving with you.
Not really.
All right. Okay. With that, we'll now take comments, public comment on non-agenda items. And is there anyone wishing to speak to the planning commission seating on a non-agenda item? And mute yourself. Okay. Go ahead and go in.
Go ahead and go in.
All right. Matter for us tonight is case file LU zero 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 four dash two zero two two Troutdale Station freestanding sign. It's a type three application. And before we open the hearing for tonight's item, I'd like to explain a little bit about the planning commission. The procedure will be followed for the following this evening. The planning commission is an appointed seven-member volunteer body of Troutdale citizens. Members of the planning commission are Troutdale residents who have been appointed by the city council. They serve four-year terms. They're strictly volunteers and receive no pay for their services. The planning commission serves as a citizen committee for the review of land use applications and various land use related matters within the city. Items which the planning commission consider include uses of land, subdivisions, major variances, land use policy plans, and development regulations. For some land use applications, the planning commission makes a final decision. For other applications, they are simply making a recommendation to the city council who renders the final decision. Tonight's application is a type three quasi judicial public hearing. The planning commission will be the deciding body this evening. And quasi judicial public hearings are held in accordance with Oregon law and can teach procedures contained in the Tractor Development Code. The hearing proceeds as follows. City staff presents their report, which includes applicable criteria and standards for the matter under consideration in the land use application. All testimony and evidence should be directed towards these criteria. If you believe that other criteria in the Conference of Plan Development Code or other city land use regulations apply, you must identify these criteria and explain why they apply to the decision. The planning commission accepts public testimony relating to the application. The applicant is allowed to speak first, followed by any proponents, then by opponents, and any parties neutral to the application. An opportunity will be provided to anyone testifying to clarify any issues raised. All issues raised by a participant during the public hearing must be sufficiently clear and specific to allow the planning commission and other parties an opportunity to respond to those issues. Failure to raise an issue during this public hearing may invalidate a future appeal based on that issue. Prior to closing the public hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The planning commission must grant the request either by continuing the public hearing to a future date or by leaving the record open for at least seven days to admit only that specific additional written evidence or testimony. If the record is left open for additional written evidence or testimony, any participant may file a written request or an opportunity to respond to new evidence submitted during the period the record was left open. If such a request is filed, the planning commission shall reopen the record to allow any person to raise new issues which relate to the new evidence, testimony, or criteria for decision making. And before we open the public hearing, I'd like to ask if, other than driving by the site, any commissioners have had any ex parte contact or conflict of interest they would like to declare?
No.
No? All right. And so with that, I'd like to remind everyone to please say if you're testifying, state your name and address for the record, and these proceedings are being recorded. Okay, and with that, at this time, we'll open the public hearing for case file LU zero 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 four dash two zero two two Troutdale Station freestanding sign.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Chair, and good evening commissioners and folks in attendance on Zoom and on TV. Tonight is the quick, relatively straightforward presentation for Troutdale Station. That is the upcoming food cart pod that you guys have seen under construction on the inside curve of two fifty-seventh, just as you leave downtown and head up the hill. We have a little bit of a unique site situation and therefore special variance application tonight. We'll have a brief presentation. I should mention that Alex Lopez, who you guys have gotten to know, he's just under the weather tonight, so I'm filling in to do the presentation on his behalf. So let's go ahead and get started. And can folks at home see a PowerPoint slideshow? It should say special variance Troutdale Station freestanding sign? Okay. Okay, as mentioned, most of you know this property. It is highly visible. It is on one fifty-one Southwest twenty-two fifty-seventh Avenue, excuse me. This is the site of the soon-to-be-open Troutdale Food Station, Troutdale Station Food Cart Pod, rather. The zoning is Central Business District, and that's important to recognize. This property is considerably large, but it shares the same zoning district as those same properties, those storefronts in downtown Troutdale. So when you consider this property in relation with its peer or comparator properties, it's actually quite unique and quite quite different. The land use's classification is commercial, so it is obviously a commercial development. And the surrounding properties to the north include Central Business District. Those are the smaller commercial structures there and some residential structures on the west historic Columbia Highway, west of the intersection. But then immediately to the west, you start drifting into neighborhood, excuse me, mixed office housing MOH. So the storage facility, for instance, there, that is actually a mixed office housing zoning district. That'll be important, too, as we go further into this presentation. This is a general site plan of what Ms. Hunter has planned for, and you can see in red that will be the prospective sign location. The sign would be fronting along two fifty-seventh, along the southbound lane or the uphill lanes. So it would be presuming to be a freestanding sign in that location. This is not what the sign will ultimately look like. This is a rough image of the parameters as far as what the signs extent would be. It is preparing for a roughly twenty-foot-high maximum sign. It would be a pole sign, as you can see, and Ms. Hunter is on the call, and she can clarify that during her testimony period. But I believe the intent is to shape it in the shape of a food cart or a van, if you will, have it be kind of a unique sign feature for the property that gets right to the point on what this property is there for. So what's being requested here is a special variance. A sign permit is obviously still going to be required, and she'll have, we'll have a signed development review and related building permits that have to happen. But for this sign to even be applied for, a special variance needs to be allowed because in the central business zoning district, freestanding signs are not allowed. The application again is seeking for about a twenty-foot tall, right at the front edge of two fifty-seventh. So unlike other variance applications, you typically see where there's a dimensional standard being applied for. In this case, what is unique is the allowance of the sign type. Not so much how big the sign is, and certainly not what it looks like, but whether this type of sign, as far as a construction type, is permissible here in this situation. These are the applicable criteria we look at in the code, includes several sections of the development code and a few other items as well. And remember, you are just giving, if you find wisdom in this application, you're allowing the application to move forward to secure the relevant permits for its construction. And the procedure tonight, as the chair outlined earlier, this is a quasi judicial period procedure, excuse me, immediately following this presentation and after questions. The applicant is on the call, too, and can answer any questions from her end. We've had some discussions with Ms. Hunter for a while about this, and we've gotten to the point where we have a public hearing. For those of you who have been on the planning commission, you recall, we also recently looked at the sign standards a few months ago and updated those. And that was one of the questions, actually, that came up. Ms. Hunter did provide testimony at the time to see whether or not sand standards for freestanding signs should be allowed. Ultimately, the commission and ultimately the council elected to have them largely be not allowed. And that unique search circumstances like her property could be handled through this process. So that's what you're doing tonight. Pretty straightforward notification as far as we notified our building division, as well as Gresham Fire and Emergency. We did, of course, send out the requisite public comment notice. We did not receive any prior to the hearing. And effectively, the comments that were received from internal reviewers was that approval can be issued. So as we look at what our decision criteria are tonight, there are four criteria that'll be in front of you. And even though it is a variance, it is a special variance, not a typical standard or dimensional variance that your folks are used to. So again, please pay attention to the criteria as they are slightly different, particularly ones where they talk about the minimum degree that is needed to vary as standards. In this case, since you're not talking about a dimensional standard, there's not a percentage that you're trying to accommodate for. It's, does this make sense for this property effectively? And we'll cover those here one by one. So here's your first criteria point. The unique nature of the proposed development is such that the intents and the purpose of the regulations are to be waived would not be violated. The staff proposed finding says here that, again, this is a property that is over two acres in size. It faces a major arterial, and it happens to have the same zoning district as a small storefront would on a twenty-mile-narrow road in your part of your downtown. So for the zoning district, this is a unique piece of property. You don't really have, but just a couple more properties like that, but the majority of them are smaller lots on slower streets with a much different architectural type for development. The zoning district does not allow for freestanding signs, and if you think about it, it makes sense because this zoning district is trying to encourage typically buildings that go up right up to the property line, where you would have hanging signs or wall signs, things that are more scaled accordingly to a street that is usually slower and maybe more pedestrian oriented, of which two fifty-seventh is frankly neither. It is a street for vehicles moving at a higher speed. So the intent behind not allowing freestanding signs is just most properties in the zoning district just wouldn't, it would seem out of whack for the scale and the character of it. But in this particular case, if you waive that standard here and allow for something that is larger, that is legible from a car, it makes sense. So we believe the criterion is met, and by waiving this provision, you're not jeopardizing the standard. Authorization of this very special variance will not be materially detrimental to the public welfare and not injurious to other property in the area. So we don't believe that it will be. Matter of fact, if you look, if you were just, you know, somebody who's not looking at a zoning map, you would presume that this property shares some more characteristics to the ones surrounding it. Immediately uphill from there to the southwest is the rear side of the storage facility, and a little bit further up is the church. This is the scale of sign that we're talking about. That storage sign has been up there for quite some time, and that sign is about twenty feet high and shares a similar square footage characteristic, or at least massing characteristic, that Ms. Hunter is proposing for her sign right there. Further up the street, Harbs Christian, while that sign is a little bit lower, it is also on a steeper hillside. So the height of that sign is a little bit skewed because of the hillside that it's on. But again, you're talking about a sign that is more oriented to a vehicle, to passing vehicles that is of a size where you can actually read what the business is on, and you're not trying to squint for it. So if you imagine then just about three hundred feet further down from the sign on the left, putting up the sign of that size and scale, if you're comfortable with that, knowing you're on that same road, this is what you are allowing to happen if you allow the special variance to go through. So if you are comfortable with that, and I think most people would be, certainly the staff is, we believe the criterion is met. The application of the provision to be waived is unreasonable and unwarranted due to the specific nature of the proposed development. Kind of covers what we've talked about already. We, again, believe the visibility issues in particular are quite important there. If you try to finagle the standard for, say, a wall sign at thirty-six square feet, as you would in Central Business District, that is not a legible sign. You'd have to tilt your head all the way to the right if you're trying to drive by it, and it doesn't convey what is there. So for those reasons and the ones mentioned earlier, we believe here the criterion is met for this criterion point. And a special variance is not required for a type-two design adjustment. This standard is not applicable here. There's no further site design being applied for that requires that adjustment. So all in all, we do recommend approval with conditions as outlined in the findings of fact that is the arch document you have in your paper plans. And again, just a reminder on the order of testimony and any comments as far as what testifiers may need to remember, and that anything not said is not grounds for. And with that, Mr. Chair, I'll yield back to any questions that you or commissioners may have.
Questions for staff?
Commissioner Wilcox. Thank you, Chair Stephenson. I was just wondering if staff knows how long the provision, prohibition against pre-stranded signs, freestanding signs has existed in CBD?
I can say comfortably at least for five years because when we had the major change to the development code that planning commission was working on when this current staff arrived, that was the most recent large change. Prior to 2017, I'm not aware of that, but we could find that out for you very quickly, Mr. Wilcox.
It was in there prior to that change, so I would say what fifteen years, Mark, at least.
Well, yeah, your CBD zoning district stretches back at least twenty-four years. So if that was adopted at that time, then that might be a safe bet to have, but we can try to confirm that for you, Mr. Wilcox.
Okay, the reason I ask is, what's the deal with the big white sign by the arch?
You're talking about the one that is in front of the former gallery?
Right.
That sign is effectively either a non-conforming sign or was classified as a different sign with a different code, but it, based on my understanding or reading of the code, it probably wouldn't be able to exist with the new code. Mr.?
The plant pantry side proceed.
Correct. That's a non-conforming sign as well.
Did you have any another question, Commissioner Wilcox?
No, that was it. Thank you.
And we didn't pull, just to be clear, Mr. Chair, we didn't pull the flat pantry sign because it is a non-conforming sign. We've, but we didn't want to pull two signs that were in performance that were at least on that alignment, so.
Commissioner?
I would call out, but I mean, public works have no comment, but being it's on a little bit more of a curve and just the sign being there, but they have no concern with it blocking the roadway or, you know, the current weather or anything, or that was my only concern.
Right, yeah, the clear vision situation is far enough where it's not expected to block anybody, especially making the right turn to leave out of the facility would be far enough away to not be in the way. It is actually set back a little bit even off the property line.
Commissioner Prickett, Mr. Al.
Looks good to me.
Okay, Commissioner Al, please.
Oh, it looks good to me. No, no questions.
So the storage facility sign is the same size?
It is roughly the same size. It's at least, it is twenty feet high. I was able to verify that.
Okay. And we have any other signs that are that big anywhere in town?
Twenty feet? Yeah, the black pantry one for sure is twenty feet in height, too, or at least twenty feet in height. And then the, again, the Harbs Christian Church sign, which although from the street level looks like it's a lower sign because it's on the embankment and how we measure the height of that, that is technically a twenty-foot tall sign. But that from, from basically the two fifty-seventh grade is roughly twelve to fifteen feet high.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just trying to think of what else we've got out here that's.
Yeah, I mean, twenty, twenty feet, I mean, you know, freestanding signs, you actually do allow to go a little bit higher than twenty feet, particularly over in Stark Street, where you'll see more of the freestanding signs, and those are usually up to twenty-four, in some cases even thirty feet high.
Right. But this is tough because it's part of the CBD, but it's also on.
Right, although as staff mentioned, at the time when we talked about it during the sign standard update, when we were doing that several months ago, when we were questioned about this particular property, because that came up during the testimony, I'm not sure why the property itself was ever zoned CBD in the first place. If we were to assign a zoning district, if it was just a fresh property that didn't have anything on it, CBD would not be the zoning district that staff would recommend for this property. Because if you look at the purpose and intent of that zoning district, it's more for that downtown environment, less so for something that has nearly six hundred feet of street frontage on two fifty-seventh. So we would have applied maybe an MOH or something like that, which is, of course, what the properties that the church and the storage facility are immediately to the south and west.
No other questions for staff? Okay.
Excuse me.
Commissioner Wilcox.
Oh, sorry, I have one other, one other question. Could you put back the page of findings of fact, special variance again?
Any particular one, Mr. Wilcox?
Thought there was only one. Looking at six one three three oh.
Sure, hang on one second, sorry. So we have A through D. This is page A, or excuse me, item A. Item B. This was kind of just related to the argument made in item B here, just as a visualization for you folks, and then item C. And then D was the non-applicable one, so do you recall which one you were looking for?
Yeah, letter C.
Sorry, one second, my mouse froze there. Okay.
I read that probably a dozen times, and I still can't figure out what it's telling me. What it's trying to say.
You're talking about what the, what the criteria, the language of the criteria is, not so much the finding even?
Yeah. Can you paraphrase that somehow so I can understand what it's trying to be? Related?
Yeah, just reading it again here before we offer our response here. So the provision, again, so how we would say this is the provision that we're seeking, or that we, excuse me, the applicant is seeking to be waived is basically the restriction that you cannot have a monument sign or a freestanding sign in the zoning district. And the application of the provision is us not enabling the applicant to move forward on a permit application, a building permit application effectively to construct the sign. And the specific nature is that this is a commercial development that is more oriented to receiving car traffic because of the physical geography of it. So by actively prohibiting a freestanding sign, you are making it therefore difficult for a commercial business to advertise the service that it is providing on a property that it is lawfully able to do, to have it. That's how we would, as a staff, to try to interpret that. It's not our favorite language, but that happens to be the language that's in the code.
Okay, so, so would it be fair to say that the words unreasonable and unwarranted would apply to the city?
Yeah, the city standard in this case, the prohibition of monument signage is both unreasonable and unwarranted. That's what, what the finding seeks to address.
Okay, that makes it more clear for me. Thank you, Chris.
At this time, I would like to invite the applicant to speak. That would be Mr. Valerie Hunter.
Yes, thank you very much. Can you hear me all right?
Sure can.
Loud and clear.
Okay, wonderful. Just thank you, guys, for taking the time to look at this special variance. I think everything was pretty plain and clear and simple to me. The only thing, I don't know if it helps, but I think I read in one, I don't know if it was the CBZ zone or D-zone, but having twenty-five, you know, small little businesses in there, don't, does that help with the size of the sign in getting that approved?
That's yours to address, Mr. Chair.
Perfect.
If you want to address that, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, that, that's, it's, it's all part of the application, so it's, it's fine to mention it, but it really doesn't tie into what type of size of sign you would have.
Okay, not a problem other than that. I just appreciate you guys' time.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. At this time, I would like to ask anyone who wishes to speak as a proponent to the application. Anyone wishing to speak as an opponent to the application? All right. Any neutral parties wishing to speak to the application? Okay. Is ready to close the hearing?
Mr. Chair, I move that we close the public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, public hearing is closed. This is a tough one. What am I?
This is exactly what we talked about, we talked about control of wanting this in our hands, making this decision, change the code.
Why should? Well, I said. It's a tough decision. Is that what you're asking? Because it's a large son. And personally, I struggle with the small town feel. Be as proactive as I can to take care of the business.
I agree with you, but I also think, as staff pointed out, this is. Completely different type of area from downtown. You know, we're on a forty mile an hour zone, so there are big businesses, big lots up there. It's a different feel from downtown. And it's going to be a major destination point that is going to attract people to come to. I know a lot of people are excited about it. I think it's going to attract people from other parts of. Different cities to come to. And I think having a sign like this. Attracting it is is not gonna hurt the downtown feel as people are gonna be. Naturally coming to it and naturally attracted to it. It's going to be that destination point. You already have big signs up. We already have big signs up going up and down two fifty seventh. I think they need this, this piece. I personally don't have a problem with it.
So I was a bit concerned about the size of this and so this evening I drove. And then the store sign and the church sign, all of which are the same. The main reason, there's a question is the zoning. Otherwise, if it wasn't zoning. It seems to fit in with the signs that are going up. And as you said, it's. I see a difference. And it's, you know.
If this was on Historic River Highway, I would be fighting tooth and nail to have this nowhere even close to it, but I think it's. Being that forty mile an hour zone being where it's at, it's a different field, but. Big plots land.
Is it actually forty? There is a thirty five.
It's actually forty miles.
Well, I know there's a forty mile an hour radar going up the hill right next to that.
Okay.
Storage facility, so. I don't know if it's technically a thirty five or forty right there, but it changed right there.
I was just gonna look it up real quick. There's actually no posted sign, but I believe it is forty.
It's it's up further. The sign is up further by the church area. And it tells you your speed limit that you're going up the hill.
Yeah, the. It is forty up there. Yeah, I was just, since there wasn't one at the start of the hill.
Okay, anyone else?
Commissioner Wilcox.
Commissioner Wilcox, go ahead, sir.
I'm not entirely clear exactly how large this sign is. I know the top of the pole or the top of the sign, including the pole. Tops out at twenty feet, but what are the overall dimensions? And also my reading of the description would have been nice to have some sort of a drawing, at least. But my reading of the description almost sounded like. The facsimile of an entire food cart was going to be installed on top of this post.
That's that's generally the the understanding that we have as staff, Mr. Wilcox. Again, we we provided the the information provided by the applicant. I think they were waiting to have. Clarification on the design. That is, you know, that might be a condition you could consider for the applicant or for this application. A square footage standard, otherwise it would default to the standard monument sign. Square footage allowance. Just gonna just see here real quick.
I believe this is eighty four feet face correct.
Is eighty four feet? Yeah, I believe that's what we had, and that's.
Twelve by seven.
And that is smaller, by the way, than the. Storage facility site. That is a roughly ten by twelve sign.
How deep is it? So it's twelve, twelve long by seven full tall and how deep?
Are you talking about the width of it?
The cabinet probably would.
If it's all right, Mister Chair, if Ms. Hunter happens to know, could you she reply to that if you have.
I meant the storage sign, would you know that?
The what? I'm sorry.
They were, he was asking about the sign for the storage facility.
I don't have that measurement, Mr. Wilcox, I'm sorry, but it's a typical cabinet sign, so I would imagine it's probably just under a foot, maybe. And I would ask Mr. Leamy. Yeah, six inches, yeah.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Commissioner Prickett.
I'm again, I'm I'm kind of concerned that we started something here, but being that it's on two fifty seven. If you go up the road, there are signs everywhere, so it's not, it's not, seems disconnected from the downtown. It just seems not like it should be part of the downtown area because it doesn't. Visually connect. If it was connected to Historic River Highway, then that would be different. But since it's not, I. And since it's already signs there as well, it's not gonna, if it was the only sign, that'd be different, but it's not gonna be. So I can, I like it, so. That's my two cents.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll just add one more thing. I I appreciate the uniqueness that they're going after with it, with it being a food cart look. On the sign itself, I mean, like Troughtail's a pretty unique place and. Having just not the generic box sign out there is gonna be pretty cool as well.
Yeah, and and I I would agree with that and to do something like that, there is a significant cost added to it. My only. My only thought was, you know, do we. To. Take care of a. Practicality issue with the zoning of the property and its location. Do we need to accommodate that? Do we need to have a sign that's twenty feet in the air that you can see from my eight four?
I don't think you'd be able to see this on my eight four, Mister Chair, with due respect.
Okay. You sure?
Yeah.
Okay, maybe I couldn't see the sign, I could see the building.
You can see the building, but the the sign, I mean, there there are a couple of things that that are. You know, it it's also a little bit in in the curve too. The building would actually probably screen it from a good direction of it anyway. And then you have the hillside to consider as well.
So once again, I think this is gonna be a destination for people and from out of our normal area. I think having a sign there will direct them in the right flow and. Might help them when they come to that busy intersection of two fifty seventh thing, historic havoc.
Or try Ikea. Okay. All right. Okay, anybody else have anything?
Oh, good.
Mister Chair.
Commissioner Prickett.
I move that we approve the finding of facts for special variants for application. Down you zero zero four dash. Two zero two two. Has written.
I will second that one.
I mean, the funding of fact and conditions, correct?
Funding effects and funding order conditions, right?
Right.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve finding of fact, special variants for case file. LU dash zero 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 four dash two zero two two, Troutdale Station freestanding sign has written. Need discussion on the motion? Okay, call a roll, please.
Commissioner Richard.
Yes.
Commissioner Wadilla.
Yes.
Commissioner Leeny.
Yes.
Commissioner Prickett.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
Chair Stevenson.
I know. Okay, that one carries. And one more motion.
That's for the final order of decision.
Conditions of approval.
Final order of conditions of approval, yeah, either either sequence.
Chair, I move we approve the final conditions of approval for LU dash. Zero 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 four dash two zero two two, Troutdale Station freestanding sign.
A second.
Second by Commissioner Wadilla. Okay, we have a motion and a second for conditions of approval and final order for case file. Zero 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 four dash two zero. As presented. Any discussion of the motion? Okay, call both.
Yes, Commissioner Wickham.
Yes.
Commissioner Wadilla.
Yes.
Commissioner Leeny.
Yeah.
Commissioner Prickett.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox.
Yes.
Yes.
Chair Stevenson.
No, okay, that one passes. Thank you so much, and thank you for your investment. You're making it attractive. Appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody.
Your staff would go to the five minute recess before we move to the next segment.
Okay. We are in recess until seven forty eight.
Okay.
All right, good evening. We are back in session and while we were at break, I was asked. About my vote on the sign, and I actually didn't know you guys cared, but in case you did. I just wanted to explain my position on that and the reason that I voted no was. Because I didn't feel that a twenty foot high sign was a minimum to mitigate. That location. And I thought it could have been done with something less than that. And as we've tried to rein in some of the signs and get them smaller with them, you know. Especially in some particular areas, I just thought we could have done that without going to a twenty foot pole sign, just my opinion. In my interpretation, so for what that's worth, but thank you for asking. Okay, and with that, I'll give it back to Mister Hamden.
Okay, I guess now for the.
He flew all the way from Florida today just to be with us tonight.
I did get my nap in before the meeting though, so right now I'm I'm upright. We'll see what the state of Oregon.
What's in that thermos? Yeah.
Uh, no comment. We're not gonna talk about my service right now. It is Troutdale branded, however, so at least on brand. I was actually wearing a Sugar Pine shirt last night during council meetings, so that was as informal as I'll ever get during council. Okay, um, tonight. Main course dessert, certainly not the appetizer, whatever you want to call this. This is now. Our third and ideally final evening of reviewing the prospective changes from House School two thousand one. We're focusing tonight on chapter eight, which is the development and design chapter here. There are good chunks of this chapter that are largely remaining intact and there are stuff that is arriving and a little bit off. Or a little bit different from what we, how we've been doing business. Before we descend into the particulars, what I wanted to do was start on just the table of contents for this chapter, which is also new. Just to explain how this chapter is laid out and how it differs from what we currently have. In the current code, we have chapter eight, which has two general sections. We have a section that is kind of a general standard section. So the stuff that you see nested in there is generally the same. It's generally the same information that currently exists. We'll we'll go through it just so you can see where that is. And then in the current code, you also have a section for any type of development apart from a single family home. As far as what your design standards and expectations are, and what House School two thousand one does is it fundamentally requires you to. Deconstruct that chapter or deconstruct that section of the chapter and spread it across and apply specific design criteria. For middle housing typologies. What you also have though, which is not always thought of, but you do actually have design standards for single family detached homes. They just happen to be residing in a different chapter. So you have currently in our code kind of a mess of some designs standards here in this chapter, some in this chapter. So what we're intending to do with this required rewrite is to bring all the design standards home into one chapter and just. Better lay them out. So you, with the proposal, we have, we have a general standard section. Then we drift into the residential standards, which is really honestly the bulk of what we're gonna be talking about tonight. Where we then establish based on what type of housing typology you have, not so much what zoning district you're, but the typology of the housing. You're bringing forth. And then you also have mixed use standards, commercial, industrial, and other, although you'll notice by the page numbers, there's not a whole lot to fill in right now. This is just setting the architecture for the for the chapter itself. And while we do have a couple of standards in place for mixed use, we don't really have any for commercial or industrial. If ever there were to be some developed or some that needed to be revised, at the point of the revision, we would bring those standards. Into that that part of this chapter. Two chapters that are currently floating out are also designed to be coming in. This very last piece right here for two fifty seventh drivers, a corridor standard plan. Between Cherry Park Road and Stark along two fifty seventh, that's through an IGA with Multnomah County. That's currently an appendix, so that would be brought into chapter eight. The other chapter that would be brought in is a landscaping and screening chapter. This chapter currently is chapter eleven. We would be merging that since that is largely a development standard type chapter. That'll be merged in there too, as proposed. Is there, before we talk about the residential standards, are there any general questions about how our our layout is being proposed? Okay. Um, as before, color coordination is key here. Anything that is in yellow is a suggestion from staff. Anything in this case that is gray in the previous packet, you had it in green, but we put it in gray because that was easier to read on the print packet. But the gray in this case is what's gonna be required by law. So as you see here, general standard section is gonna be largely clean. Where we get into applicability and exemptions, this just kind of helps explain the outline. Much like we just did in the table of contents, so why it's all yellow, it basically says. If you have standards for this type of development, look here, or that the the standards that are contained herein. This is where you look for, so this is kind of a a reference section for for folks using the code. Site development review in accordance, and then if we refer back to chapter six as far as what standards are required in a site development review application. So that's a highlight there for a reference. Site development review in accordance, and then if we refer back to chapter six as far as what standards are required in a site development review application, so that's a highlight there for a reference. This is where the exemptions are located, again, nothing changes right here, this is all an existing code. And then, as you recall, in chapter eight, right now, you do authorize the department director to have adjustment standards to allow for situations of unique topography or parcel configurations and characteristics. This is a so-called administrative adjustment section. That is something you've had in the code for some time, it's just being nested into this section right here. The classic instance of this is, for instance, you may have some standards in multi-family which say you should have your buildings in the front of the property and your parking in the rear. But we've had situations before where we looked at applications that, well, the parking might be in the rear of the property, but it's also against the east wind, it's the direct force of the east wind. And the developer may be like, well, that presents some issues for me, you know, if I'm doing a housing project that might cater to seniors, that might be not so pleasant to have that property be arranged in such a manner, and that's one where we've applied this before, it's like, okay, you've made a demonstrable argument, and you've hit on those criteria, and we've reviewed it openly in a type two decision-making process, so that's an example of an administrative adjustment. It doesn't vary the standard from from, you know, required parking or anything like that, it just is a little bit more true to form and allows for a little bit more of an editing pen from our review as far as what's capable at a staff level. This is not a new concept, you already have this.
Right.
Yeah. I'm going to skip through the the next couple of sections, there's not a whole lot to talk about, again, these are sections that are already in the code, some of this is copy pasted from required language that we're required to have from the state or from Metro. So really nothing to tinker with here and nothing that the new law takers with. We do have placeholder sections in case you ever wanted to merge other chapters from the development code, so this would be a placeholder section if you wanted to merge parking standards, we're not proposing to do that right now, because this is a big enough amendment as it is, but we have a placeholder for that. We are bringing in landscaping and screening standards in, that is a smaller section, so we felt that that was an okay section to go in there. There is a minimum basic improvement table, this, we just missed it, I'm sorry that we didn't have it, but that table would go in there, but the table, the required standards for your minimum landscapes are not going to change, it's just, we just didn't get the table in there, so we apologize, we missed that table. So effectively, apart from moving the landscape standards, nothing is changing for those standards. There is some cleanup language as far as what we require for performance bond, again, that is just something since we're making the move into chapter eight, we were just making some small language adjustments where we've run into issues or interpretation before, so installation and performance bond or security requirements, that just helps articulate what the city's expectation is there. Similar story here in eight oh seven oh, if you ever wanted to move retreat section out of the municipal code, this could be a placeholder for it. And if you ever wanted to amend or remove your lighting standards, which is also again in the municipal code and not in the development code, that could be a placeholder location for that too. So we've tried to basically construct this chapter to be as big or as little as you need it to be, but as long as it meets the minimum standards for for review. Any questions before we dive into the specifics of the residential standards?
All right, go ahead.
Okay. All right, again, anything you see here in gray is required by law, anything in yellow is proposed by us. So there are some language adjustments here that have to be made. The first and most obvious one here is that single family detached duplexes must share the same design and development standards, they are considered one of the same, so when we were talking about earlier in the previous meetings as far as the impact of the law, and when we've talked about it with city council, when we've introduced this, where we see potentially the greatest impact for change, if if it is even going to be that substantial for us, it's we we think there will be a heightened increase in duplex construction. That's because the threshold for duplex construction is that much easier than other types of middle housing. A duplex, you basically have the same design standards that you do for a single family home. And honestly, that's already kind of already baked into your current code depending on the zoning district that you have, so this is not as while you're seeing this information in gray, it is actually not as outer body as your current code allows for, because you do allow for duplexes in these single family zoning districts already in in many circumstances.
As I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Let's come, Commissioner Wilcox. First thing that caught my attention under this section is eight one ten B two duplex dwellings are not subject to off-street parking requirements.
That's a requirement for state law.
So that's that's in their model code?
That is in the model code, and that is not one that they're going to tinker with.
Okay, interesting.
One thing I would say about this too is, and I think Mr. Wilcox, you know, right now, for single family homes, we have a one car requirement, one one off-street space per unit requirement. Most development that we have, of course, does have at least one, in many cases two, or if you count the driveway spaces, three or even four off-space requirements, and even if the state doesn't require it, that doesn't prohibit then a duplex developer from also having on-street spaces, so the state says you can't require it, but in many cases, for the attractiveness of the construction, the developers may choose to still have a garage component to it.
I guess they could.
But that is probably your your biggest, your biggest highlight there. The design standards that you have, again, these are existing in chapter three of your code, we're bringing those into chapter eight, so again, these are the requirements that you need to have for this. Staff is going to suggest just a really quick request here about windows, we've had a couple of complaints when we, and and they're not really substantive complaints, they're more qualitative complaints that we've heard from citizens about certain certain types of development, residential development lacking windows, and just having kind of broad-based, you know, just like siding, but just kind of huge expanses, so the the request here is to consider a insertion of windows for a minimum of fifteen percent of the area for all street facings, the sods must include windows around stores. There's a ten percent minimum right now, at least on one, and we're suggesting on anything that has, so a quarter house needs to have windows on those areas too. We think it could make a big difference as far as just neighborhood design aesthetic. But as you can see, it's yellow, so it's completely optional, but while we were in this section, we thought that that was appropriate, ask to make.
Yeah, so we have. You said we have ten now?
Yes. But on one side.
Or the fifteen?
You're saying on a corner, it's fifteen on fifteen and fifteen, well, yeah, basically would say it's fifteen, no matter your street frontage, it's right now at ten, but it's just on the one, and here we're saying fifteen on any frontage. Or my fifteen on the front, but fifteen on both sides, kind of levels your privacy too. If you're on a corner. That's completely adjustable.
What's fifteen percent of the total?
Oh, we're saying fifteen percent of the street facing the sides. Correct, so it has to be fifteen and fifteen.
Right, but fifteen percent of that side.
Right, yeah, but if you are not on a corner, then it would just be fifteen on the front, right, but then maybe it's just me, just don't necessarily like a lot of people looking in.
So if you have a bed here.
Yeah.
On the corner. You have a window and two walls of attention.
You couldn't.
Yeah.
Is that too much?
Yeah. It's not hard for us if you want to strike it or modify it, just we just thought we would throw it in. Personally, I'd say modify it to the front, front of the house, okay, but it's one opinion of seven.
So what you're proposing is changing from ten to fifteen and if being on one street front.
Yeah.
So are we eliminating natural lighting?
How's everybody feel about that, everybody okay with that? You pull that up here, Florida.
I'm getting there, hang on. It's that jet lag, get it, don't, if you want me, I can put my my background back if you'd really.
No, not that C N thing.
No, I thought I thought that was a nice look personally. I can dream, anyway, sorry, quick aside on that one, back to business. Was there a consensus there or what to do, I mean, that could be something you can iron out also in your hearing too, although your hearing could be lost, so if there is direction, we'd love it now.
Okay, what's been proposed is fifteen percent going from ten to fifteen percent on all sides, and of course, it's fifteen on on one facing home. Everyone okay with that?
So a minimum fifteen percent on one street frontage and ten on the other, is that what was Mr. Wood?
No, we're going from ten to fifteen.
Right.
Okay, and on a corner, it's fifteen, so it'd be fifteen on one side. Only.
Okay. Last section, last portion here, duplex conversions, a existing detached single family structure is allowed. Conversion does not increase the non-performance, it's pretty, pretty well understood, this kind of happens already, what this says is that this is a straightforward application, not not requiring a a significant review to do that. And again, how we define duplexes, just, I know you've heard it last meeting, but just for everyone's reminder on it, a duplex is no longer one unit and one unit on a separate, on two separate lots divided by a common wall, duplex now according to the state standard and definition is two units on a single lot. So when we have duplexes, as we historically thought of with a property line in between, that is now a two lot townhouse, not a duplex.
Which identifies as a single one.
Okay, your next section is triplex and quadplex, and now again, triplex, quadplexes, townhomes, and multi-family residential, you in the current code have a larger catch-all design section for all those types of housing typologies. What the state law is requiring you to do now is to create different standards for triplex and quadplexes in this section, different ones for townhomes, different ones for cottage clusters, and then multi-family has its own standards. My request, Mr. Chair, just so we can make sure we address it head-on, can we just skip right now to multi-family, so you all can understand where the discrepancies and where what's what's remaining in the code versus what's new?
Sure.
Okay, so we're going to jump forward a little bit to the multi-family standards. So this is what you have currently in the code, the only thing that is really effectively changing is you're taking out the middle housing typologies and you're leaving behind the multi-family standards here, so those standards, as you can see, are really not changing. As you can see, there is really no highlight right here. That is is there, so all of your standards, and when we say multi-family ones, we're talking about apartments and condominiums or apartment projects or condominium projects, those standards that you have today will remain. So House School 2001 does not affect those standards. What House School 2001 does do again is that it takes out those other housing typologies, starting with triplex and quadplex standards here. And you'll see a lot of gray here. So the general outline for these next couple of sections here, you have an approval process section here, you have development standards, and then you have design standards thereafter, and then any other special or unique circumstances here. Now, one thing that is of importance here is this little word or little phrase right here, applicants must demonstrate that sufficient infrastructure is provided. When we talked about this in previous meetings, what we mean by sufficient infrastructure is it is the burden of the applicant to demonstrate that their triplex or quadplex is not going to overburden the utility system, water, sewer, and storm that is serving the respective lot. Now, if you were doing a new development, you're going to have to do that analysis anyway, because either the system doesn't exist or the system you know will need to be upgraded. So that's a presumed cost as far as an engineering point of view, so if you have a new development on a virgin land of significant acreage, they're going to do that anyway, they always would. What's different this time is that this is presuming an infill lot potentially. And what it's saying is that same engineering threshold of demonstrating that is now also required for a triplex and a quadplex, which is not a cheap cost proposition. This is one of the things that some of the smaller cities in the region really fought for, because again, we had concerns that existing neighborhoods would not be able to handle the infrastructure capacity of densifying to such a degree, so while everything else you may read in this section and the next couple of sections may seem intimidating, that is a very critical piece, that is a good break that you folks can have to limit the potential scope and impact that that more dense development beyond a duplex to have on on existing neighborhoods. And again, anything that's new or coming in, they're going to be doing that anyway, and it gets reviewed through a landings application. Any questions on that, but that's really, really important provision to know.
Seems like it could be a good tool down the road. I'm sorry, seems like it could be a good tool down the road.
Yeah, yeah, because, and and I mean, you keep in mind, most of our established neighborhoods were developed with a presumption of single family detached homes. Can you handle accessory dwelling unit?
Sure.
Can you handle a duplex? Yeah, likely, anything more intense than that, that that gets tricky, and you're talking about meter up sizing, pressure expectations, the building code requirements taken and plumbing code therefore, so yeah, but then there's a lot more complication of 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 the situation, so that's why it's in there. Okay.
I'm just looking at page after page after page, your state dictates. At what point are we going to become unnecessary?
That was like a year ago, we became unnecessary.
I I agree, I I read and read and read, and then I got to a point where it's, well, I'm reading, but I'm not going to be able to change anything.
We're obedient servants to the state.
One thing I would point out, Mr. Wood, and especially here with the window section here, we're requiring this of duplex, of triplexes and quadplexes, the fifteen percent of all street facing façades, and that was a state requirement, but at the same rate, we've heard local complaints about the appearance of certain housing, so that's why, again, it was inserted in there, we're not trying to necessarily sneak a state provision in there, but we did admittedly borrow the language that they have. But completely optional.
Chris, I had a couple of questions on page fourteen.
Sure, um, give me one second to go back and, and with this one, because it is such a sprawling section, commissioners, if you have a particular question on any section. Please let me know. Go ahead, Mr. Wilcox.
Okay, uh, down toward the bottom of the last quarter of the page, the numeral two. Number of units as code does not allow for the creation of more than four dwelling units on a lot, including accessory dwelling units.
Yes.
Um, my reading of that is you could have two single families or two single, two detached, single family. With ADUs within them. That would be allowed. Is that what they're talking about?
I think what they're saying here is that, um. You could have a triplex with one of the triplex units being an ADU, but if you are creating an ADU out of one of the triplexes, you have created effectively a quadplex. That's, that's how staffs interpreted it.
Okay, so, so you're.
Primary residences and let's say you had the basement of one of those three units in the triplex turned into an ADU. At that point, on the, on the one single property, you have now four dwelling units. You cannot exceed that. So if the second triplex wanted to convert space into an ADU, they could not do that.
Oh, okay. And the other question was the very last paragraph. They refer to all street parking space per development. What, what do they mean by development? Is that per housing unit or the entire tax lot?
I have to, let me read the rest. That's a very good catch, Mr. Wilcox. I am not sure what the state is referring to there. What does the commission wish to do with that?
That's straight verbiage from the state code.
It is. So if they're gonna be unclear, then I think you have the right to edit, use the editing pen here.
And that, that's repeated on the top of the next page also.
I would say one parking space per unit.
I agree.
Anyone disagree with that?
For living unit.
For dwelling.
For dwelling unit.
This is your chance.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay. Understand, of course, and just a reminder, the state does review these things too. So if they see that and they disagree with our local interpretation, we, we could be. Getting that hinted back to us, but for now, we'll, we'll go ahead and make that change. Good capture.
And those who state have a definition of development.
There's a definition for certain things. I don't know if development was one of them. I'd have to go back to the other chapter. One moment, I can find out for you real quick.
Yeah.
Oh, that might be where it's from. Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll have to double check for the, with that one, but I think for now, we'll, we'll go ahead and, and put the edits in as, as requested.
I recommend that you edit. I think somebody suggested dwelling.
Dwelling unit on you. Yeah, we have that in there now. Oh, sorry. Make sure it's green again. So yeah, we're, it says development, replace that with dwelling unit here and then up here as well.
Let me go back a little bit.
Sure.
Want to look at, um. Where we tie into the requirements for infrastructure. Right there. One zero two zero.
What page I'm in?
Page fourteen.
This one is fourteen. Can you show me where we tie that out? Cause I'm not seeing that.
What, what do you mean by tie out? I'm sorry.
What is, uh, one zero two zero?
Oh, that's the definition section of the code. So we defined, the state did provide a definition for sufficient infrastructure.
Oh, they did?
Yes. Um, let me pull that up here real quick that I can find very quickly. I think.
I think they're standard. That's probably pretty low.
Well, the standard may be low, but I think there is at least interpretation since the, the people who are gonna be reviewing it would be the engineers, the public works department. So, you know, the, you'd have to presume that it's gonna have an engineering analysis tied with it at, in order for an engineer to make the analysis, there has to be. A sufficient amount of submittal provided and detail provided for them to be able to say with certainty that the system is sufficient.
Right. Just like to give them as much as we can.
No, I hear you. Um, give me one moment while I find this new definition here. And then I will share, share it here. Can everyone see that? Okay, it's, uh, should be coming out with the sufficient infrastructure.
And that's what you expanded on a little while ago.
So to your, your four typical.
Of meeting established service levels.
Seems pretty generic.
Uh huh.
Who's, yeah.
It doesn't say, I mean, I was looking for something like that this development wouldn't. Overtax any part of the system.
That has to be demonstrated in the application.
Right, but I mean, this just says connecting to a system capable of meeting the established service levels.
Right.
Which I would think the system meets that.
Not necessarily, because you may have a system in a established subdivision that has a six inch main or an eight inch main. And it was built to presume a capacity to serve X number of homes. And now you're introducing X plus four potentially with a duplex. And the system may not have that capability to do that.
Okay, so can we say that? That this development will not. Exceed the capacity of the system? Or this development will not cause the system to exceed its capacity? We don't really say that.
Capable of meeting established service levels. Well, I, the capacity is the one that is one, one threshold or one, one thing to consider. The other thing, there's other things like water pressure.
Right.
You know, there's other things like, you know, sewer gravity, um, level of service for a emergency response vehicle based on a, on a level of service, uh, analysis. My, my concern is if you're gonna get too particular with it, you actually might be shooting yourself in the foot. Because, yeah, you might have the capacity for it. Let's say from a water line, can a water line feed this development? Sure. But does it then be by nature of it? By nature of the demand of the water, by the adding of the fixtures, does that then reduce then the pressure, the acceptable pressure that the city has for its utility system? It might. So in that case, capacity, you've limited yourself then to a very narrow definition as far as whether or not the system is, the service level is being best. Because service level is as much to do with water pressure and water quality. As it does capacity.
Right.
So I think you have to, it's, it, I, I understand you want to be, have it, have a little bit more teeth, but you have to also allow. A comprehensive analysis of the applications being done. And if you, if you get too particular, you might actually compromise that ability for us to do that in such a way.
So listening check is the teeth is gonna be in the engineer.
Yes.
The company doing the study.
Yes.
For.
Right, and I, I would, I would, I, I feel reasonably confident. And again, I, I should stress, it's my opinion, you, you folks have got different, I feel reasonably confident that our engineers, when they look at development. They have a pretty high bar and expectation as far as what. Information is provided by the applicant. And if the applicant does not supply the requisite information, it gets just right back to them. It says. You know, where's this analysis? You can't just tell me that, you know, oh, based on a national standard. You know, a triplex is going to have this type of effect on a suit. No, did you actually look at the system and say Sandy Palisades? To know that you're not gonna overtax our water main on Blue Ellen or Evans. You know, so it, it requires that level of sophistication, therefore requires that level of engineering analysis, therefore requires that level of cost to a developer, prospective developer. It's not an easy ask to have this done. The thresholds are somewhat open-ended, but it also is somewhat by design too. It allows the cities to make that determination, the reviewers to make a determination. Are the systems being satisfied? Are the service levels not gonna be compromised?
Chris, this, Mr. Wilcox.
Chris Wilcox.
Um. If you can go back to the screen. I think, uh, the wording that, uh. Chair Stephenson might be having a problem with is the word meeting. I would suggest maybe retaining established service levels. It's just an idea.
Yeah, is this verbiage straight from the state?
This is language from the state, but this is also language that, that the planners were to get in there too. So I don't recall if there was a wordsmithing battle on which. Which word to use there. You're welcome to try retaining and see where it gets you.
I kind of understand the word meeting. So if I want to do a development. I potentially have been able to increase services.
You might.
To meet this.
Another case, another, another case in point, you, you, we see this with multi-family, for instance, uh, the recent Fox Ridge development, even though we're talking about multi-family, but this is a, a good instance. The capacity on Halsey Street was sufficient for them, but because the terrain consideration, the water pressure was not, so they have to therefore install boosters to the water system to allow for those third story apartments to have sufficient water pressure. Without that, they're not meeting the service level.
Right.
So you could have a very similar situation if you had, say, a three-story triplex. Then wanted to do that.
And I guess I would come back and say, okay, maintaining is a bigger word.
Okay.
And I think, um. You know, meaning is, is just seems great to me. That's all.
We can, I mean, it's, again, it's. This is your draft. We could put it in there, but, um, this is a state definition and that might be what they, they take close, pay close attention to. So if you're gonna. If you're gonna change it, be very careful with the, the wording. I can't see any fatal flaw right now on it, but I'm starting caution here.
But in what, what I was told was. They just. Let basically listen till you know. Is that not true?
What do you, I'm sorry, I'm not following you there.
If, if you have a, a thing that you have heartburn with, turn it in and let them tell you that they don't like it. Cause if they don't do, they will tell you that.
Or then you say, oh, that's a much better.
Yeah.
You understand that one bit.
Meaning in, in some ways, I, I think about it from a planning terminology satisfying could also be another word too, that you've satisfied the requirements. I mean, that's the word you folks use in your decisions all the time. You've satisfied the requirements. That is also a broad word, but it could also be expressed in different ways.
Yeah, and the, and the only reason I went there with maintaining is the expectation that the community has now. Is this, and if all of a sudden there's this water pressure dip. You know, then to the community that would be not maintained.
Yeah, I mean, I one hundred percent agree with you. I, I would prefer to even have something more. In there, something about putting it at risk or something of that nature, but you were never probably not gonna get that to fly with the state, so.
With that word, are you establishing a service level that can't be changed?
Well, you're maintaining an established service level. So it'd be maintaining the, the level that's established. So let's say it drops or goes up. That would be a change in the established level that someone would have to meet. And that I would think would be public works determining what those levels are.
That and plumbing standards too, uh, if you're talking about nonsense. I mean, we think about these as utilities from a public delivery, but there's also a plumbing code that kicks in here too, particularly on, on water and sewer.
I'm good with maintaining.
Okay, okay, we'll, we'll incorporate that change since that's not in the chapter here tonight.
Everyone okay with that?
Mike, maintain.
No. No.
What do you want?
If we have a standard, we need it or we don't need it. And that's why I think meeting should stay in there.
Okay.
Is there at least a general consensus or at least a majority, just so we know what to do?
Probably have. More for. Um, maintaining the meaning.
Is there, but the, I guess I'm trying to talk through.
Yeah.
So if we're, where we're at right now, we're maintaining. But for. Who's saying where we're supposed to, where's the standard? We don't have a standard necessarily to meet right now.
The standard would be set by public works.
It's the public work standards. It's, it's not incorporated to the development code, but they, they have a, a certain service delivery expectation for their utility and their infrastructure.
So in other words, let's say you've got a. A standard, the standard for the industry might be eighty PSI, but here we run ninety PSI. We would be maintaining a ninety PSI rather than going to an eighty PSI. It's how I don't care.
We don't want to lower our.
Correct.
Lower. How about meeting the established service levels, the public work standard or service levels in the city? In case there is a differentiation from, say, acceptable national standard or where we go above and beyond.
Oh, what you're getting at, Tanny, is if we're at a higher standard now to lower ourselves to what a acceptable minimum is.
Correct.
You know, we don't want to go backwards to whatever that.
I don't want to have a, you know, a place where we can drop down and still meet this national.
Just to meet.
So, so in, in order to change the public works standards, that requires internal change here. That's not something the state can control effectively. So maybe how you, how you do it is of meeting, let me bring back the screen here. If you said existing standards?
Me and the existing standard. If you want to keep the word meeting.
Or, or, um, you could do that or, or meeting established service levels. Establish or meeting service levels established by the public works construction standards manual. Because that allows.
As you pointed out earlier, if you're in a certain neighborhood and you have a higher PSI in that neighborhood. In a certain neighborhood and you have a higher PSI in that neighborhood currently. But public work says you could be down here if you wanted to. We don't want to see a drop in the neighborhood, because they're.
What you could have.
Yeah, because if you could drop to that neighborhood, everybody else has already become accustomed to their higher PSI and. Great water pressure in the neighborhood, why do we want to drop it and? Take away from our.
Yeah, I mean, you're, yeah, I. Get what you guys are saying, this is maybe again where the state would have. Some sharpen opinion as far as that, where, okay, just because you've enjoyed a stronger shower pressure over the years. Doesn't mean that.
You get it going forward.
Because if you're making like an improvement to your house, if you're adding that many more fixtures, or you're adding a second floor to to a ranch home, I mean. Your upstairs may not have as good a pressure or whatever.
Mark, you see where we're trying to go? No?
It. I don't see a difference really. We have a service level. Or levels and. They do change. With need. And if we maintain, can we change?
Yeah, what I'm saying is. Maintaining the level is different to me than meeting the level. Maintaining could be held to a higher standard than meeting. Meeting to me is a minimum. Could just be my interpretation.
Yeah, each of us have a different interpretation. Yeah, I don't see a difference. Maintain with separate service. Locking it in. But majority rules.
Or the state may not.
Yeah. State may not.
May overall.
You guys okay with that, or what are you thinking? Are you all right?
So the direction is to change any reference of meeting in that definition on screen to maintain.
That's how I understand it.
Sure, truly shaking your head yes or yes. Okay, sorry, we didn't have a the full view, but I think that's what I heard.
There they are, okay.
Okay, we'll make that note and we'll we'll get that in there.
They can always tell us. If what? They can always tell us.
March can call.
March is going to fly by.
Yeah.
They can't tell it though.
There's again, a lot of gray information. Or there's a lot of gray information in this section as far as what the state's requirement, again, for the sake of time, I understand that there are important. Details in here, but we want to focus on any concerns that you folks have had maybe in. Earlier review of this, hopefully. A lot of it, again, so a reminder on the general. Flow of it, approval process, development standards. And then the design standard component of it. I mean, this is, this is one thing to to note too, I mean, yes, the state is definitely opening up the the floodgates as far as. Allowing for it, but the state did provide. Probably a little bit more rigid standards even than your current existing duplex, triplex, eight block like standards as far as site orientation and design, how these things look like. So you you're not getting. Necessarily boxes, there has to be some intention and design as far as. What these middle housing typologies would would have to look like. You probably have a little bit of free rein here as far as what you can require, but you can't require it in such a way where it becomes effectively preventative from the construction. Staff's recommendation, just because again, this is kind of an. A new world is, you don't tinker too much with it. Particularly into the design stuff. But it is again, ultimately, you're. It is, I I I use air quotes, I guess it is still your code to. Try a local amendment if you wish.
Yeah, I guess I would do come back to one of the standards, which is, you know, not requiring. Off street parking. Could cause some issues in some of the neighborhoods, I would think. You're smiling.
Oh, absolutely, good. Thankfully so.
That'd be concern.
Understood. One thing that is not said in here that should be stated though is. Even though the development code may be opening up the floodgates to allow for this type of use. There's still the building code, and the building code is where a lot of the rubber hits the road as far as prospective development costs and. Actual ability to construct your proposed improvement on a site. And while the. The building code is effectively the same again for single family duplex structures, it is a radically different code for anything greater than that, so. While you may have greater flexibilities and allowances per state law through zoning. Regulations, the building codes really aren't changing all that much, so there are still going to be requirements for. Service levels, fixture sizes that again, I think the state is. That the people who drafted this law presumed, oh, well, if you just simply allow it, everything will will be fine and you'll bring down the cost, but really the most of the costs are with. The building itself and what prescribing to the code. So just another reminder out there. That that's part of this.
Yeah. It's just sometimes when you're a pioneer like we are. This hand of face down in desert. Since I was lookout.
Are there any other particular sections, Mr. Chair, and quads and do tries and quads he wants to visit? Because the other ones are probably a little bit more of interest, I would think.
No.
Okay. Let me screen share here just a moment. All right, moving down to. Townhome projects, something you but you folks are actually. Rather familiar with as we've had a lot of townhome development as late. There are a few yellow highlights that are kind of sectional references. These are basically highlighting what those standards are in the dimensional table that we've covered a couple meetings ago as far as what. What the requirements are, so you saw what the state mandates were within the dimensional use table, these are sectional references that I highlight back to what those state requirements are. The minimum number of required off street parking spaces for a townhouse project is one space per unit. So unlike tries and quads, there is an expectation of a holding one space per unit standard, which is what we currently have on books right now for townhouses, so. Again, what we're seeing, the industry townhomes right now, these with the current. Housing patterns and housing demand, how townhomes, all of the. Middle housing typologies is the easiest one for developers in many ways, because it's it's. There's not a lot fundamentally changing with the new law. Even though you've seen a lot of gray in here, you already have. Design standards in place, we're effectively nesting it in here, and in many cases, some of the standards that in the existing code really didn't. Apply to townhomes. For instance, if you have a townhome, you probably will have a common wall oftentimes that is longer than forty feet. On your current standards, you require. A a. Stepping of at least four feet to add some some building composition to your building, you can't really do that with a townhouse. If I'm running a sixty foot common wall, I can't step back four feet off that common wall if I'm in a attached townhouse, it's just not how townhomes are built. You can do it on the front facade, of course, so that's kind of. Clarifying one of the reasons why townhome design is being pulled out of multifamily in a lot of codes is because. It is a little bit different, but it's not completely thrown at the design manual. And honestly, because of the smaller square footage and also because of the propensity for homeownership. Or for lot ownership, frankly. Townhome development will probably continue, we will try to encourage it in areas where it is appropriate, even though it is now open to more areas of the city, but. Developers who are doing townhomes are generally looking for those areas we're trying to steer townhome development to anyway, that is closer to our town center, closer to places of shopping or other services nearby. So that's that's kind of where we continue to expect the trend to go. Are there any general questions in this section, I do have one little note here that I'll want to get to here as well.
Any questions so far?
One thing here that the state put in their model code is unit definition. Each townhouse, as the state originally said, must include at least one of the following. On the street facing facade, and they listed out seven right two good points now, earlier when we talked about single family homes. There was a list of twelve items and we were requiring six things. So in that spirit and intent, we were thinking, well, why should it only be just one thing that's included, let's include two athletes, so let's go a little bit above and beyond and say, no, we do have still. An expectation that does go above and beyond what the state requires from a. From a design perspective, we think we can get two done, any more than two, it might actually yield itself to competing architectural styles that might make for other townhomes. So we were thinking, we were trying to figure out a way to ensure it didn't have bland design. But you're not going to have a mishmash of design too, but it also keeps with the spirit and intent of ensuring you have some architectural design quality. In line with each single family home expectations.
I would think two is still a fairly low bar.
Yep, right, but better than one. Better than one. Any any further questions on townhomes before? Or this section? You also notice too throughout here in the townhome section, but you'll see it also in the cottage cluster and and the the other ones is, there are a little bit more illustrations. Those are directly from the model code, so those illustrations would help. Clarify some of those standards, so they would be incorporated in the code.
Nicely done, by the way.
That we didn't draw. But.
Well, they're not actually.
Okay, the last last major section of significant change cottage clusters, which is a relatively new concept for Troutdale, they do actually have a historic. Development pattern, but not not out here in suburban areas, but. This is smaller cottages typically clustered around a common area or agreement that we're talking about here. I think it's best before we. Try to explain further kind of an example of what one of these things looks like, there's actually one in therapy, if I recall, there's a. Small development near Sailor's Ponds where I think this is where the keel did a development there that. Probably your best local example.
On the inside of that development.
Yeah, yeah, so that's an example of how it could be done, I think the only differentiation there is, I think those are individual lots whereas. They heard per this code, it would be considered one lot. Similar potentially to like a condo ownership model, where maybe the structure itself could be owned or or percentage owns, but it is one technical common law. So this is just a example of how you could orient it.
How big is that lot?
How big is the lot? This one I don't think has sample measurements, but let me see if we can find a. There there is a little bit of a scaling factor here, like, so when you're talking about the courtyard, the common area here. Needs to be. Hundred fifty square feet per cottage within the associated cluster, and then the cottage sizes do have, there is also some standards on. The size of the cottage. The maximum floor area is fourteen hundred feet. But that could be.
Two levels.
Yes.
Yeah.
So it cannot exceed fourteen hundred feet total. There's one other thing I was looking for here, I'm sorry. Do you have anything? I may have to go back into our other chapter, it might be in the table.
We will not.
Go ahead.
So the minimum lot size for cottage cluster is actually the same as it would be for a single family house, so. Ten thousand square feet in kind of the lowest of the dense, the current densities and four thousand in the highest, that's minimum. But then you also have factoring in. Items for lot width and lot depth, so those standards do apply here. Let's see here, what else? And I believe a cottage cluster requires at least four cottages. In order to be called.
Being clustered.
Yeah. Yeah, four units is the minimum density, four units per acre, excuse me, so that's also an important distinction, so four per acre, not four twelve, but four per acre.
Four units per acre?
Yes, that's the minimum density. There is technically no maximum density, but that's obviously related to the carrying capacity of the property.
Four per acres.
Sorry.
Four per acre.
Well, acres, you know, forty, about forty three, forty four thousand square feet.
Almost eleven thousand.
But that's about what your standard is for a single family home.
Yeah.
Just smaller, more confined, you know, there could be in some cases, some some practicality for this. I I know a lot of people in the city are concerned, especially in field development about tree removal. A cottage cluster solution to development might actually in many cases be helpful with tree canopy, so there could be some some benefit to that or by person flexibilities that are allowed. Rather than a typical. Cut through driveway or or street and then removal, so it may allow some more unique development pattern. But. Again, it's something new, it's something we just have to be mindful of.
Commissioner Wilcox.
Okay to proceed.
Okay.
Any other comments on cottage clusters?
We're excited.
I can tell. Okay, I'm sorry, let me get reoriented here, I skipped ahead a little bit. All right, home stretch. We mentioned this before we dove into the middle housing, we had the multifamily residential projects and dwelling section that is largely the same. One thing that we did want to, and and I didn't highlight it here, but I thought about it a couple days ago, and I wanted to bring it up here. Is architect. Is architectural elements and building facades. No wall of a residential building shall exceed a length of forty feet without a foundation offset. This is the so-called staggering or, or building composition effect. We have been running into a number of issues with folks on forty feet. As far as the length. Staff still thinks there's wisdom in building articulation, but forty feet might be a little bit too prohibitive. Based on some of the building housing typologies we've seen. We would request maybe going up to fifty feet. So not doing away with the standard of fifty feet would give a lot more flexibility and probably avoid the need for variance. Realistically, how often is it coming up? Pretty much every multifamily development we've had. And fifty would solve it? Fifty would solve, would have solved almost all of them. Yeah, some of them, of course, didn't want to do it because it does add a, a cost expense, but it also. There's a reason architects do it.
Right.
So fifty gives us a little bit more flexibility, it just allows for. Apartment layouts or condominium layouts to be a little bit more flexible.
Okay. Okay, so down with the architects.
Down with the architects. Thank you. Okay, again, most of this, rest of this stuff is, is all the same. That was really the only other one. A placeholder, if there's ever a desire for specific standards for age restricted units, which was at once contemplated, but it did not advance. Manufactured home parks, this is actually pulling from a section in chapter five and bringing it in. There are no effective changes to this chapter or to this section, I should say. This is just again, bringing a design and development section in the code into the design and development chapter. So, as you will see throughout here.
Chris.
Yes, sir.
I have a question on. Letter B on that chapter. You have. Second line under B permitted use in the R five and R four. I thought you were changing, combining those and changing the name.
Same question I was asked. Yeah, I think what happened there, Mr. Wilcox, is I just used the wrong color and just didn't change the name there. That should be in yellow and needs to be with the new zoning district names. So, good catch, thank you. Otherwise, apart from that highlight. Everything else should be remaining the same here. No recommended changes here. And again, this is for manufactured homes. Many, excuse me, manufactured home parks. The next section is for the dwellings themselves. Because obviously you can have manufactured home dwellings that are on lots that are outside of parks. There was just a lettering syntax error here that we'll fix right here on this section. But again, other than that, the standards remain the same. A few years ago, you adopted the accessory dwelling unit standards. Again, the syntax here is just a little off on the lettering, so we'll get that fixed. But again, no effective changes here. And the shared dwelling section, which was kind of a change made at the twenty seventeen code. When the term congregant housing fell out of favor, the terms that shared housing came into effect. No changes here, that just pulls it from chapter five and brings it into chapter eight. As mentioned at the very top, we have a section here built in for mixed use standards. We have placeholders for each of the mixed use zoning districts right here. We're not making any suggested changes that you move those standards at the present time, they're just there for when you need to. Make those changes, since this is a largely a housing focused. Amendment, we wanted to make sure that we kept it. Focused on housing, but we introduced the skeleton for this. We currently do not have any commercial standards in place. If you did, they would go in here. Likewise, the same for any industrial specific standards in this section here. Last but not least, other standards, so these are more of the corridor based standards. And again, this is just the one that we really have right now, is the two fifty seventh drive corridor. Again, we'll fix the, the lettering here. As you can see, it remains largely the same. Actually, it remains entirely the same, I should say. And that requires any sorts of changes to the right of way in particular. Yeah, this is a, an intergovernmental agreement with both of the counties, so. Any change would also require an IGA with the county or an updated IGA with the county. We're not recommending that right now. And with that, Mr. Chair, that completes your review of the initial draft. Really thank you for your patience, endurance and wisdom, everybody, as we go through this, this is a big one. Most popular one, but we will. Have done what is required of us. We're hoping to get this back to council by one. Unless there's any objection, we are tracking for April twenty seventh for your hearing. And assuming. You completed for that evening, since there shouldn't be too many surprises beyond any changes you've made. Council would receive it in May. And it would go into effect before July first.
Our first hearing would be when?
April twenty seventh. We are expecting another hearing that night, and I actually was going to cover that during our department report. But this one for sure will be April twenty seventh.
Okay.
Unless there's any objection.
I think we'll need to do two on this.
And a hearing that night. I'm sorry. And a hearing that same night. That, that, we're, we're running into a little bit of a calendar conflict, so we wanted to discuss that with you. But this is obviously the most urgent one that we have, because if we don't act. Then we, we run the risk of the model code being implemented beforehand. You're asking about a second hearing for you at your level or? That's within your, your disclosure or your, your ability to do that. Council was scheduled to hear it on. May tenth and May twenty fourth. If you wanted a second hearing, you, you could potentially have Wednesday, April, or Wednesday, May fourth, but you're running into a conflict then with CAC that night. So maybe you'd have to do Tuesday, May third.
The only thing I was thinking is. You know, possibly it may take some pressure off the council.
To have two?
Yeah.
I mean, they're going to have to have two as well.
Make it easier for them if we can.
Well, you could, what you could do is, if you, if you folks can check your calendar availability for Tuesday. May third, that gives a week before the council meeting. Which would be six days after your initial hearing. It is a Tuesday, so it's not a normal meeting day, but then we don't have a conflict with CAC, which meets on the fourth, and they, they have an active agenda that night, so. But we, I mean, we don't have the ability to do it any earlier in April, because you have budget committee, which is going to be quite busy. And we're running it to a state notification requirement at that time.
We guess then.
There is a possibility too, that you might have April. Thirteenth off. So even though you would be adding two meetings close together, there could be a possibility that thirteenth could be an open date for you all.
April thirteen?
Yes. But we won't be ready to review this then. I'm sorry. So we won't be ready to review. No, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have this. We wouldn't have this able to be ready. We, what I'm saying is you may not have business on the thirteenth.
So it's kind of like. We trade that one for another night.
I can do my third if we need to.
Okay.
That's your backup, I mean, you know.
Everyone okay with that, we did that? Okay. Twenty seventh, May third.
Okay, we'll plan for that. I mean, we, we will only advertise for April twenty seventh. We will mention if there is a continuation of the planning commission hearing, it'll drift in, so we don't want to. Give people the presumption that they can attend either or. They should try to attend the twenty seventh.
Right. It'd be easier if they took the twenty seventh.
Right, right.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
That's it for that. And thank you all.
Okay, so moving along.
Okay. Department update, some of you, she's been with us now for almost six months, but I, I don't know if everyone has had a chance to meet Melissa. So Melissa, you wanted to introduce yourself real quick and say hello and. What you're working on?
Yeah, nice to meet you all. I'm Melissa Johnston, I'm associate planner. With the community development department, and I've been working primarily on long range planning projects. So updating our transportation system plan right now and working on. A plan for their riverfront trail in the urban renewal area. And nice to meet you all tonight. I normally as staff, we is on to the citizens advisory committee. Let's see, before I came to Troutdale, I worked for City of Woodland as associate planner. And back before that, I was solid waste outreach and worked for urban forestry as well. Good to be here now and planning. I, oh, and I studied at Open State University, so I didn't come from too far. Went to the Merck program there.
She's a husky though.
I, yes, yes, originally University of Washington. Yeah, yeah, studied forestry up there. Yeah, very nice to be in Troutdale. Thanks for having me.
Nice.
Welcome.
A couple of other items for you folks. Again, welcome Commissioner Leamy. We've, we've gotten to know each other through Town Center Committee. Thank you for filling in immediate need for, for us and on the record, thank you, Mr. Mamonie for your service. Couple of other items for you, we solved the calendar riddle. There's no anticipated meeting for the fourth Wednesday, that's spring break week, so you folks are off for that week as well, so. You guys are looking strange, are you, is that not spring break week or? That's fine. I got it on my calendar though.
You didn't have it on?
I did have it on my calendar. Okay, well, you don't have to come now. If you want to come here and sit alone. Yeah. It's our understanding that with the changes to the mask mandate and we haven't received any suggestion, there will be any local policy. Otherwise, there will not be a mask requirement to be in the Calock Room after this Friday. So for the folks at home, if you wanted to come back and haven't come back because you're just uncomfortable with the mask, you are welcome to return. I would remind folks though, that we will always have a Zoom meeting availability. That is now enshrined in state law, we have to always provide digital meeting access to folks. So we will continue to be in Hollywood squares here, but at least. The comfort level around here will get a little better with, without that. And thank you for the two years of this situation and, and appreciate always your, your patience with that. I think we solved the, the calendar question that we had for you on that. We do have a pretty full docket ahead. There are some other hearings that are coming down your path. There might also be an appeal, which we haven't had in a long time. Of a staff decision that could potentially be coming to you all, so look for an email from us, because we, we will have some. Scheduling challenges, even though you're getting a break, April, May are looking to be quite busy, so just be on the lookout for that. Anything else, Melissa? Can't really think of anything else we've got. You mentioned the transportation system plan, do you want to just elaborate on what CAC is doing and where we're going with that?
We are working over the next several months to update the transportation system plan. And the primary reason we want to update the transportation system plan at this time is because we in twenty twenty one. Adopted the town center plan. The twenty, the twenty twenty to twenty forty town center plan, the town center plan has many transportation projects. And it corridors and ideas for certain sites, that's not yet in our transportation system plan. So we're looking to bring these plans in concreancy with each other. And so that involves adopting achieving projects into that plan. And we'll, we'll be doing some other updates that are necessary at that time, but that is the primary reason we're updating right now. We'll have in May, let's see, is that right? Yep, in May are the firm that we've hired to work on this project with us, Kittleson and Associates. Will be coming to give their second guest presentation to the citizens advisory committee and, and get feedbacks.
And you folks will get a chance, of course, to review it too as a planning commission, and that'll come probably in July is what we're tracking for, for your involvement. But if you want to sneak peek, check out the CAC.
You're welcome to come and give feedback or feedback if you want to look at their packet and then email me if you have any comments. We'd be happy to receive those and discuss this with CAC. Thank you.
And with that, Mr. Chair, I think we'll yield back from the staff.
I guess I'll start a couple of things. Last night, the city council. Forwarded on and approved the recommendation that we made for the projects in the transportation plan. Which, there were three, if you remember. One was the pedestrian overpass to the Confluence site. Down Kibwe. The second one was the parking structure at the Confluence site, and the third one was the second street. Bridge over two fifty seven. So they did elect to forward those through. And so now they're in the plan. And I did attend the. CAC meeting last week to kind of watch the. TSP. As it unfolded and how that's all working out. And to stay engaged in that, so I, I kind of understand what's going on with them, so that we, when we get it, we can be more effective. And I also want to thank Commissioner Ramoni for his service. To this committee and welcome Mr. Leamy. Thank you for your service and for, actually, both of you guys that got confirmed positions, this was a. Very quick turnaround. And thank you for agreeing to take on additional volunteer service. Appreciate it. And with that, we'll go through for concerns, Commissioner Preckett. No? Okay. All right, Commissioner Wilcox?
Oh, nothing for me.
Commissioner Allen.
The only thing that concerns me about what we've been talking about. Yes, we know that most households have two cars. And we're planning for one. But I understand there's nothing we can do about that. Other than that, no other things to mention.
Point, point taken. We, we talk about that quite a bit, thank you. And. Commissioner Whitehead.
No, the only thing I would have is. Little bit concerned about the state's. Involvement more and more and more. City business. What we could do about it. Some different people in the legislature, I guess.
That's. Probably the, I guess, the easiest solution, I would say.
That's it.
And I think it is important that we tell them what we like and what we don't like.
And what's more important, the people, applicants and the residents are aware. That a lot of this is not our, our idea. We are just messengers.
Yeah. Actually, most of it's not our idea. Yes, you're correct.
I, I agree with. Mark one hundred percent, this, the state is interfering too much, but I, I think we just need to. Remind everybody of that and get out of the boat when we, when we can, you know, one hundred percent. But just thank you to staff to make any adjustments that they're making as they're going through. Lot of dry reading, but a lot of it makes sense, take care of, clean up everything while we can and. Thank you for the effort, because for somebody that plans to be here on planning for a while, it's just going to help out going back.
Was that a threat or a promise, Mr. Whitaker?
All good, that's all I got. All good, that's all I got.
Commissioner Lemey?
Thank you for putting your confidence in me.
We look forward to having you. And with that, I'd like to thank staff, great job on this, and I know you guys are loaded up down there, and there's a lot left to work. I also want to comment that my thing, I noticed that there's already a dumpster and some activity at the old city hall site for the away days that we just approved of the last media.
Nice.
Going quickly, and that's a positive thing, I think. Yeah, all the way around, exciting times. Like to thank everybody for their time and their dedication to the city, and with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sure.
Okay, well, we'll give you a second, Shirley.
I'll give you a second.
Motion to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Did you want to say anything, Commissioner Glance?
Oh, I was just going to say goodnight to everybody, thanks for what you did. Night.
Bye bye.
Night, everybody.